Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order this April 4th, 2023 Pierce County Council meeting. The time is approximately 3:01 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor Cooper.
Here.
Counselor Denson.
Here.
Counselor Herrera.
Here.
Counselor Hitchens.
Here.
Counselor Morell.
Here.
And Counselor Mello.
Here.
There are seven members present, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Seven members present in a quorum of the council. Member three is pledging allegiance to the flag. I'd like to ask us to please stand in a moment and ask Counselor Cooper to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, followed by a brief moment in silence in tribute to our men and women in the military.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is approval of the agenda. Any objection to the agenda as presented? Not seeing any. The agenda will stand approved. Item number five is our consent agenda. Vice Chair Campbell for a motion.
Before I make that motion, let me consult with the operator. I think I need to poll a few because we have a lot of appointments today. So...
There's currently no one on Zoom that's a pointee. Is there anyone in the audience that's a pointee? Yes? Okay.
Who do we have here?
Greg.
Which number? C1, okay. Thank you. In that case, I would move approval of the consent agenda, moving item C1 to Section 7.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda, except for item C1, which will be moved to Section 7. Before we do that, let me just also just make sure, are there any other members of the public in chambers who are here for an appointment, to be considered for appointment to a Board or Commission, aside from Greg Garner? Anyone else? Okay. We have the right motion in front of us. Thank you. All the, um, excuse me. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Cooper.
Aye.
Counselor Denson.
Aye.
Counselor Herrera.
Aye.
Counselor Hitchens.
Aye.
Counselor Morell.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Counselor Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the consent agenda is adopted. That brings us to Section 6 of our agenda, messages from the executive judges or prosecuting attorney. We have one, a message from the executive transmitting the following ordinances, which were approved and signed on April 3rd, 2023. The executive signed ordinance number 2023-5S, which was an ordinance of the Pierce County Council, allowing for shared housing villages in the residential resource zone of the Parkland-Spanaway-Midland Community Plan areas in unincorporated Pierce County. And the executive also signed proposal number 2023-7, which was an ordinance of the Pierce County Council restating and modifying the Pierce County Small Business Innovation Matching Grant Program. That brings us to item 7 of our agenda. Let's do C1, which was moved from the consent agenda. Counselor Cooper for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to move R 2023-35 for consideration.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt proposal R 2023-35. Madam Clerk, will you please read?
Proposal number R 2023-35, a resolution of the Pierce County Council confirming the appointment of two new members, Dennis Rogers and Greg Garner, to the Parkland-Spanaway-Midland Land Use Advisory Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. We are joined by Greg Garner. Welcome. We'll invite you to the podium to introduce yourself and just briefly why you wish to serve.
Surprise.
Sorry if this was a surprise, sir.
My name is Greg Garner. I live in the Parkland-Spanaway area and family's been there for three generations. And I just felt it was time to step up and be a part of things. So, and I thank you for your, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Gardner? Thank you for being here. Thank you for making it downtown to introduce yourself and your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to provide comment on the appointment to these two, of these two members to the Parkland-Spanaway-Midland Land Use Advisory Commission, please come forward and state your name for the record. Anyone in chambers? Not seeing any. Ms. Price, anyone online?
For any member of the public wishing to speak, you can press the raise hand icon on Zoom or press star nine on your telephone keypad. And we have no hands raised at this time.
Seeing no further hands, we'll bring it back to the council and close the public hearing. Are there any final remarks by council members? Counselor Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to say my appreciation for Greg stepping up for this. I did call another constituent to get a reference on him, and I learned that you used to be the owner of a go-kart business, correct? So, you've been active in the, in the community, and I really appreciate your background with the knowledge that you will have and that what you will bring to this commission. So, thank you so much for stepping up, taking the time, and, and I think maybe you're retired, so we'll be probably asking a lot from you, even though I think you get busier when you get retired, but we'll find a lot for you to do. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I add my gratitude, Mr. Gardner, for being here today. There's quite a few other appointments that were in the consent agenda, including this one. Many community members standing up and volunteering their time to serve their community, and we're quite grateful. So, thank you. Seeing no other hands, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on 2023-35?
Yes. Counselor Denson.
Aye.
Counselor Herrera.
Aye.
Counselor Hitchens.
Aye.
Counselor Morell.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Counselor Cooper.
Aye.
Counselor Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. Thank you again. Other items under Section 7 proclamations, we have proposal R 2023-34 in front of us. Counselor Hitchens for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move adoption of R 2023-34.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2023-34. Madam Clerk, will you please read into the record?
Proposal number R 2023-34, a resolution of the Pierce County Council proclaiming April 3rd through the 9th, 2023, as National Public Health Week in Pierce County, Washington. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hitchens, you read this into the record.
Thank you. Whereas during National Public Health Week, we honor public health professionals and volunteers who tirelessly work to protect and improve the health of all people and places in Pierce County. And whereas, public health professionals help our community prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recover from a range of health threats, including disease outbreaks such as COVID-19 pandemic, measles, natural and unnatural disasters such as wildfires, flooding, severe storms, and public health emergencies. And whereas, a person's health status can differ drastically by zip code because of social, economic, or environmental health factors, access to healthy food, education, healthcare, parks and recreation, transportation, and other community assets. And whereas, in communities across the United States, people are changing the way they care for their health by avoiding ta, avoiding tobacco use, eating healthier, increasing physical activity, and preventing unintentional injuries at home and in the workplace. And whereas, the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department promotes public health throughout the community by providing education, resources, and testing to treat community-based issues such as sexually transmitted diseases, drug and alcohol dependency, chronic disease prevention, and food sanitation. And whereas, this year's theme is centering and celebrating cultures in health and feeling like we belong, being a part of our communities, and fostering cultural connection supports our health and the quality of all our lives. And whereas, Director of Health, Dr. Anthony Chen, said during last, um, last year's National Public Health Week that "From the shores of Puget Sound to the summit of Mount Rainier, our public health workers protect and improve the health of all people and places." Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Pierce County Council that April 3rd through 9th, 2023, is National Public Health Week in Pierce County, and we call upon the people of Pierce County to observe this week by championing public health and caring for all our communities, adopted this fourth day of April, 2023.
Thank you, Counselor Hitchens. We are joined by Ingrid Payne from our Tacoma Pierce County Health Department. Welcome. Please come forward and love to hear your remarks accepting this proclamation.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Mello. Dr. Chen couldn't be here today. He got called out to meet with Senator Patty Murray on very important things, as we'll see, walking through some of these notes that I have in front of me today. Last, last month, we published a report detailing how the complex events of 2020 and 2021 took a tremendous toll on our families, neighbors, and communities. It's a stark reminder of how much work we still have in front of us to protect and improve the health of all people and places in Pierce County. And this includes helping people in Pierce County recover from COVID-19 pandemic. You are critical partners in this mission. We depend on your leadership, your dedication, and the support of public health in our county. We truly appreciate your support. Where we live, work, learn, pray, and play determines our health. Together, we strive for healthy people in healthy communities. And National Public Health Week offers us an opportunity to learn more about public health and how it influences, excuse me, our community's health. This year's theme is centering and celebrating cultures in health, as we heard earlier. Each day, we explore a different topic, and our work to address it makes this community a better, healthier place to live. Yesterday, we focused on community. Today, we took a close look at violence prevention. Wednesday is reproductive and sexual health. Thursday, mental health. Friday, rural health. Saturday, accessibility. Sunday is food and nutrition. You can follow our social media accounts and subscribe to our blog to learn more about each topic. You can visit our website at tpchd.org to subscribe. And thank you again for this honor with your continued support. We will realize the vision of healthy people in healthy communities in Pierce County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ingrid. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for being with us. We know Dr. Chen did get called away, but we certainly appreciate his leadership and all of the team members at our local health department.
Thank you.
This is, well, a little bit more protocol to do, and then we're going to invite you up here to capture the moment with, with a photo. So, let us open this up for a public hearing. Is there anyone here in chambers wishing to provide comment on this resolution? Not seeing any. Ms. Price, anyone online?
For any member of the public wishing to speak, you can press the raise hand icon on Zoom or press star nine on your telephone keypad. And currently, there are no hands raised.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Are there final remarks by council members? Counselor Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I will have the opportunity to do this tomorrow at the Board of Health meeting, but just want to do it publicly today and thank the, the leadership and the many staff of the Health Department that truly saved lives during COVID, but you continue to do that work in our region. You are helping make sure that our restaurants are safe places to eat, and that I know that when I walk in. Love the signs, by the way. And, and you also work at a level of education to make sure that people understand why the decisions matter that they make about their health, about how the impacts of where you live, the activities that are going around, on around you, so you can make decisions about where you might go and play, pray, work, or just do anything in our community based on evidence and data. And we have a growing population that is looking to that kind of information and making decisions based on that, which is wonderful, but it also means we need to make sure we have a source that's doing that well, and the Health Department is truly led, not just locally, but nationally, on how we work on educating our community and bringing them along to help change some of the behaviors and make it easier to figure out how I do those things so I can be healthy, so my family can be healthy. So, just appreciate your leadership. Boots on the ground, all the way up to the top. It's, the whole team is doing a phenomenal job, and it's being noticed. So, thank you to everybody. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Hitchens. Counselor Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. We often forget how important educating public health is. If you've ever been to another country that doesn't have a public health awareness or a third world country, for lack of a better word, you'd see that health is not good there. You know, here, we have been having these programs for a long time, and it's just something that we've got to continually educate people on an everyday basis. You know, COVID really put things in perspective of the worst-case scenarios, but in between the worst-case scenarios, we still have the education of basic health for all. And to get in those corners that aren't hearing it, and other communities to, to get them up to par of being educated and knowing what right looks like for the benefit of everybody. So, it's good to put this out. National Public Health Week, it's important. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say I have a little bit different take on this in that I don't want to dismiss any of the public health workers because you are vital. And having the education out there is also important. My church has a team that goes to places like Kathmandu, and they go to the villages, and they'll help them learn, yeah, you have to wash your hands and brush your teeth and such. And I, I just, I know that it's a very important thing, only words have meaning to me, and there are some points in here that are a little bit overreached that I'm, I'm not able to agree with. So, I'm not supporting this today, but it's not because I don't support the hard work that you all do. They've been through a lot, you have put in a lot of hours, and that's all appreciated. So, thank you for what you do. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. If you go up to the Health Department out front, there's a big banner or sign that says "Heroes Work Here." And I, it's an important reminder to those who go into the Health Department, particularly public health, day in and day out. Last three years has been very hard. And the one thing that I know of the people at our Health Department is, you know, they didn't sit at home waiting to see where the pandemic may take them. They doubled down. They were working twice as hard. They were going all across the county. They helped us pivot with food delivery, make sure that the, while we moved from central distribution points to car delivery, how do we do that safely so the food is still safe? Restaurants closed down, they had to open back up. How did we ensure that safety? I saw people working in so many different ways. A lot of people think that solely as, you know, the, the COVID itself, and yes, the Health Department did so much there, but that overshadowed all the other work that they continued to do without fail during that time, so that we didn't all focus on COVID, and all of a sudden, we had other diseases outbreaking because we stopped paying attention to our water systems and our sewer systems or our septic systems, that we continued to make sure that we were hitting all those marks that make it just a generally healthy place to live compared to other parts of the world. So, thank you so much for the work that the Health Department here and across the nation does, so much of the work they do. We don't notice because we don't get sick, and we thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. I'll close by also adding my gratitude. I first want to thank our county delegates to the Health Board. Vice Chair Campbell, Counselor Hitchens, Counselor Herrera, and Executive Dan Meyer represent Pierce County and our many communities and constituents on governing the Health Board and helping to lead the Health Board. Thank you for your leadership. The staff does an amazing job at the Health Department. I appreciate everything my colleagues have pointed out. One of the things I'm so fond of our very sophisticated Public Health Department here in Tacoma Pierce County is that they really get the whole sense of humans and whole sense of our well-being and are invested in the entire well-being of us. Yes, you, the Health Department's on the front lines of communicable disease. We depend on you to be on the front lines of identifying those and preventing that. Yes, keeping our food safe and these other matters that are super essential to, to, to our civilization. But the Health Department really understands this concept of what it really means for us to be healthy, healthy and happy well-being, right? The, the concept that is instilled in us is this social determinance of health, that there is more to being healthy than stopping communicable disease and having access to a doctor. There's, actually, that's actually a small percentage of what makes ourselves and our communities healthy. The vast majority about what makes us healthy is, do we have access to healthy food? Can we get exercise? Can we lower our tobacco and alcohol use? Can we live a naturally healthy lifestyle based on how our communities are designed and built? And all the, do we have a sense of safety? Do we have a sense of belonging in our communities? These are the things that actually contribute to closer to 80% of whether or not someone is healthy or not. And the Health Department is very invested, very strategically, in programs to really get at that. I'm a, I'm a huge fan of that work, and I'm very grateful that the, the leadership, the board members that I pointed out govern that way, give that kind of direction and priority setting, and that our Health Department looks for really tangible and specific ways for each and every one of us to truly live healthy lives and to feel included in this community in so many different ways. So, thank you for your forward-thinking work, and the, that, that work is so hard to do, but it is very valued. So, with that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on 2023-34?
Counselor Herrera.
Aye.
Counselor Hitchens.
Aye.
Counselor Morell.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Counselor Cooper.
Nay.
Counselor Denson.
Aye.
Counselor Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is six ayes and one nay.
On a vote of six ayes and one nay, the resolution is adopted. Please help me congratulate our Health Department staff. We're going to move to the next proclamation, if that's okay, and we'll, we'll do a picture after we get through the next proclamation, if your schedule allows that.
I just have to, we're in the city.
We will get you out of here in about 20 minutes. Does that work for you?
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we have proposal R 2023-37 in front of us. Counselor Denson for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I move adoption of Resolution 2023-37.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2023-37. Madam Clerk, will you please read into the record?
Proposal number R 2023-37, a resolution of the Pierce County Council proclaiming April 10th through 16th, 2023, as Food Waste Prevention Week in Pierce County, Washington.
Thank you. Counselor Denson to read into the record.
Thank you, Chair. Whereas, up to 35% of all food produced is thrown away rather than eaten, and this nutritious food could help feed hungry people. And whereas, everyone benefits from better utilization of food resources, and a family of four can save an average of $1,800 annually on uneaten food. And whereas, schools and universities have a special role in educating the next generation on reducing, recovering, and recycling food. And whereas, shared resources, land, water, energy, used to produce and transport food that ultimately goes uneaten, could be saved. And whereas, food in landfills decomposes slowly, releasing methane gas which contributes to climate change. And Pierce County Sustainability 2030 Plan targets reducing food waste as a key action to reducing the county's emissions. And whereas, the average household in Pierce County throws away three pounds of edible food per week, which adds up to approximately 15,000 tons of wasted food in landfills every year, when all Pierce County households are combined. And whereas, the Pierce County Planning and Public Works Sustainable Resources Division is hosting a Sustainable Gardens event series where residents can learn about composting, worm bins, and no yard gardening, including a live compost demonstration, which is free to the public. And whereas, we can minimize food waste by planning our meals ahead of time, using a list to purchase groceries, donating excess food to local food banks, and utilizing resources found at www.piercecountywad.gov/foodwaste. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Pierce County Council that April 10th through 16th, 2023, is Food Waste Prevention Week in Pierce County, Washington, and the council encourages all residents to commit to reducing food waste, adopted this fourth day of April, 2023, Pierce County Council.
Thank you, Counselor Denson. We have a number of community-based organizations and local units of government who work in this space to help accept this proclamation and share a few words. So, please let me first invite up David and Ursula Thompson from the Food is Free Tacoma program.
Thank you, Chair Mello. My name is Ursula Thompson. I'm the Director of Operations for Food is Free Tacoma. Our goal during Food Waste Prevention Week is to spread awareness and inspire people to reduce food waste in our homes, workplaces, and communities. We're partnering with the Washington State Department of Ecology, the FDA, Pierce Conservation District, and Fresh Food Connect to reduce food waste by 50% by the year 2030 as part of the National Winning Against Food Waste Initiative. Food in landfills decomposes slowly, releasing methane gas which contributes to climate change. Diverting good food from landfills protects our shared resources and reduces greenhouse gas emissions. Taking steps to prevent food waste has the power to feed people rather than landfills, save money, and conserve resources. I want to share some facts and statistics regarding food waste. Food waste is the number one material in America's landfills, accounting to, for 24.1% of all municipal solid waste. Landfills are the third-largest industrial emitter of methane, with food waste alone representing 8% of total global greenhouse gas emissions. There are 55 million people in the United States that are food insecure, 18 million of which are children. 40% of the produce harvested from farms gets wasted as a result of wasteful supply chain and production practices. Our current food system leaves too many behind, both nationally and right in our own neighborhoods. We want to live in a country where we ensure fresh food gets to our 150,000 community members facing food insecurity, and at the same time, reduce the 40% of food that is wasted in the supply chain. A world where we reduce the carbon footprint of food by sharing it locally, a world where we share the food we grow at its most nutritious point, harvested when ripe and eaten while fresh, and do it in a way that builds food sovereignty and stability of our local and national food systems. We believe all this is possible through the simple but intentional act of sharing the food that we've cultivated with passion and care. With our hands in the soil, we have the profound ability to strengthen our relationships with our community and with each other. One person sharing homegrown food might not change our entire food system, but together we can. Food is Free Tacoma grows food in Parkway Gardens, hosts weekly pop-up produce giveaways, and gleams farms and fruit trees. We do all this to increase access to free, fresh food for our community, reduce food waste in our landfills, and to educate folks on why it's important to keep our food local. As a result of these efforts, we diverted 18 tons of food from the landfill last year. We host our pop-up produce giveaways every Tuesday at 11:00 AM at Hope Point Church. On May 14th, we'll be starting our Food Independence Garden Share Days, where we'll be sharing homegrown produce with the community at local parks in Tacoma, two days a week. You can find more information on our website, foodisfreewashington.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Ursula. David, would you like to say anything today?
No, no.
You delegated the speaking. Good choice, though we're always eager to hear from both of you. Thank you for your work that you do. Next, I'd like to invite up Dana Cogan, Executive Director of the Pierce Conservation District, and Krista McIver, Program Director of the Harvest Pierce County Program of the Pierce Conservation District.
I'm trying to encourage some of the, the folks who actually do all the great work to come up with me so that you can not only see my face but actually see the face of those who are going to be doing a lot of the work that we get to do. So, I'm Dana Cogan. I'm the Executive Director of the Pierce Conservation District and I have Kristine McGlo-, Kristin McLeever with me, who is with our Harvest Pierce County team. And then we've got...
I'm Devin Kerr. I'm a Program Manager at Harvest Pierce County.
I'm Jocelyn and I'm their Mayor Clerk.
They all said I, if I made them talk, they would get very upset with me. So, they just had to say names. So, thank you so much for actually bringing light to this important issue within our community. At the Conservation District, we have the great, great responsibility of helping folks actually glean food. So, we have a program called the Gleaning Program, which we go out and we help landowners and we help farmers actually harvest food directly from either their fields or their trees that are either in their backyard or just down the street from all of us. We all know that having access to food is critical, but one of the things that is often hard for some of us is to actually pull that fruit off of the trees or pull it out of the fields because sometimes we don't have the time as individuals. But the great thing is, is with our Gleaning Program, you can contact our office and we can actually send a team to you to help harvest some of that fruit that is ready and ripe for the taking. So, the great thing is, is that within that process, we also donate about 30,000 pounds of food every year to our local food banks. So, through the process of gleaning and connecting and doing the good things that we do at the Pierce Conservation District, we are able to not only help people get access to good food, but help prevent all of the things that we, you just heard about of keeping things from the landfill and actually keeping our communities fed, happy, healthy, and whole. And I'd like to actually point out that this actually all goes back to the last proclamation also of health and wellness within our communities. When we actually pull that fruit off before it maybe gets a little rotten, we can actually prevent there from being health issues within our communities also. So, full circle, we get to do a little bit of everything, so thank you for helping bring awareness to this issue within Pierce County. And at the Conservation District, we are excited that we get to help prevent this food from going into the landfills and getting it to the people who need it. So, we look forward to seeing you either in your own backyards or on the farm just down the street from your house if you'd like to have us come and help you glean your fruit and share with the community.
Thank you for being with us. Thanks for your programming in this space to prevent food waste. Our final individual helping us accept this Food Waste Prevention Week proclamation is Ryan Dix, the Sustainable Resources Administrator here at Pierce County. Mr. Dix, welcome.
Thank you, Ryan Dix, Pierce County Sustainable Resources, Planning and Public Works. Yeah, I, I've been thinking a lot about food waste. I think they all said it probably best, but food waste is the work that we do in sustainable resources. As you all know, we have environmental educators, we have solid waste, and we have sustainability. And it really touches all of those different factors. Our environmental educators are in schools, they're talking to kids about food waste prevention, they're talking to adults about composting classes, worm bins, all the things you can do to not have food waste end up in the landfill. Our solid waste team is really focused on, you know, the effort to, to bring food waste to homes and to, to make sure our facilities, our solid waste facilities, our composting facilities can accept food waste. And that's going to be a really big opportunity to remove a large swath of, with stuff that's currently going to the garbage, now we have of, of the possibility of composting it. And so, that's something that's on the, I would say it's, it's got to happen by 2027, so it's coming. And we're just making sure that our facilities are prepared to handle it and that whatever changes in that composting process that food, adding food brings, we're prepared to handle. And so, that's the solid waste part. And then the, the greenhouse gas reduction part is obvious in that food waste, there's a lot of fossil fuels, there's a lot of different products that go into creating food, and every time we waste it, we're, we're burning fossil fuels in that process. And so, it is a significant solution to climate issues. And so, it's, I think, you know, as we've completed our Sustainability 2030 Plan, we're going to be coming back to you to talk about that in a few months. But then we also completed our, our solid waste plan. Food waste is the critical connection between all of these areas. And so, you're going to see, I think, improved efforts on our part and improved, just putting money where our mouth is to try to reduce food waste. And with that, I'll say thank you.
Thank you for, thank you, Mr. Dix. Thank you for highlighting the work you and your team do on our behalf. This is a public hearing. Is anyone in chambers wishing to provide comment on this? I think everyone's here to accept this or the previous proclamation. So, Ms. Price, anyone online?
For any member of the public wishing to speak, you can press the raise hand icon and zoom or press star nine on your telephone keypad. Currently, there are no hands raised.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council and I'll open it up for final remarks or questions. Councilmember Herrera?
Thank you Chair. You know, it's really interesting, sometimes these proclamations come up, you know, Food Waste Prevention Week. And just bring, it brought back a, an old memory as a kid, you know? When I was growing up, that was a thing, you know? You do not waste food. You eat everything off your plate. It came from my parents and I think they grew up with parents that lived through the Depression. So, it was kind of a real thing of, you know, waste food because we don't know if it's going to be here tomorrow. We've kind of evolved into, you know, different things and hearing the discussions today kind of educated me a little bit. You know, the, there's nothing more nutrient than, you know, local foods and things like that, and that does happen here. We're lucky to have small little farms here where we can, we can get those things, you know, you know, honey and, you know, it's better that's grown here versus it coming from the Dakotas. I don't know. But, and then also, we all know on the County Council that filling up our, our dumps or our quicker than they need to be is something that would really affect in the future because we don't know where we put our next dump. So, anything we can do to slow that down and, and do those things is great. So, that Gleaning Program, I'm really interested in that. I, I'm really interested in that because I have a 96-year-old farmer who lives down the street from me and he can't do it anymore. I've been doing his farm for five years and we grow things and we give things to the community. I thought I was the only one doing that. So, it's kind of, kind of neat that, that's happening around. So, that's great. So, all right, thank you Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Herrera. Ms. McIver, I think you got your next work party leader here. You heard it here first. Councilmember Krueger?
Thank you Chair. And thank you for all the work that you do because I know there are a lot of places that love getting those boxes of food on that. And I remember going on a tour years ago and we went to the forest where there was gleaning for, for the food through there. And I want you to know, I do appreciate all that you're doing. However, I am, I'm not supporting this today in that there are some concepts that I, that are in here that I'm just not able to connect with that, that are kind of separate from what you're doing, but they're included in here. But I, I just want you to know, I do appreciate what you do. It's a lot of fun. I've been out to the farm, I've seen all the gardens where all the work is done, and it's pretty amazing that you can, can coordinate all of that. And I know that places I've visited, they love, they love the food they get and get the boxes, but thank you for what you do. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell?
Thank you Chair. Thank you for all the work that all of you do on this important proclamation. I'll be proudly supporting it. But David and Ursula, what, what you guys do and have done in the last couple of years is beyond amazing. Getting people to realize that the empty beds in their backyard or, you know, I planted four tomato plants and didn't realize how many tomatoes I would get, or 12, and being able to not just have that rot, but your, your food is free work to then deliver it to people who need it. Just a simple concept, food is free. I mean, that's just, that, that should be a statement. And so, when we hear about you taking the food from your neighbor's farm, the, I, I encourage you to work with the Gleaning Project and Food is Free because they literally go out to parks all over the area and just set up tables and say, people, come, take what you need. Take some extra, share it with your neighbors. And going around and partnering with people to saying, we'll come out and install a big little box right in front in your parking strip, you just water it, make sure that it lives, we'll come by and collect it later. And empowering people to be part of the answer. So amazing, so amazing. We, we have a huge debt of gratitude to the work and the people. You have fed, you've fed more people than you even know because not only have you gotten the food passed along, you've encouraged more people to become better, and I know you've helped us be better farmers, so more productive. So, I, I just, the, the gratitude that I have for the work that you do is amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hinton?
Thank you Chair. Thank you to all three organizations that are here today. Though you all are doing separate work, you work together to help solve a community problem, which I love, and I really truly appreciate the education aspect, both of, of somebody who wants to help a farmer or me who someday will actually pick the sometimes plums that show up on my tree before they go to bird food. But the, the, the education piece is really key and the way that you've found ways to engage community where they are, showing up in community gardens and helping them problem-solve difficult situations. What, what do we do with this abundance of tomatoes? Or what do we do, this is dying and I, I really want the tomatoes? And, and both then end up with food going to people who need it or want it instead of into our landfill. And I think when we start looking at these systemic problems, we really are working as a community to help be better. And so, just appreciate all of you for the work you do and anybody that's not here that's doing that work and the community that has stepped up and done Food is Free programs and contributed. So, appreciation around the board. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Denson?
Yes, thank you Chair. And I echo everyone's thoughts here that I really appreciate all the work that you are doing. Last year, I was campaigning, so I was walking all of the neighborhoods in North Tacoma, which is part of District 7, and so I really got to experience a lot of the Food is Free Tacoma and signage. And, and it strikes me that not only are you helping feed people and provide the sustenance they need and the nutrition that's good for them, but it's just built a better community, I think. It's created more neighborliness and it, it just warmed my heart walking around these neighborhoods. I'm like, I want to live here, don't tell the Geek Harbor people. It just gives such a great, I love Geek Harbor too.
You are on TV.
But it just has such a great sense of community and neighborliness and helping one another and, and I really think we need to get back to that, not only, you know, in Tacoma, but Pierce County and nationally and worldwide. And, and what you've done is really, gosh, it's just connected people in a beautiful way. So, thank you for that. And, and also I was reflecting what Councilmember Herrera said about growing up with parents that, you know, didn't let you waste your food, and I had the exact same experience and have definitely passed that on to my children. I mean, there were times and still are, I didn't even serve myself because I'm like, I'm just going to eat what they don't. So, I, I guess maybe I've like collected that from my parents more than, more than I should, but I think that the lessons that you are passing along to not only young people but, but adults that are participating in, in this program of, of gleaning in particular is rebuilding a sense of respect for our food and being grateful for what we have and not taking it for granted and not just saying, hey, I'm going to buy all this food. If I eat it, great. If I don't, I'm going to toss it, toss it and we've got more. And especially in this day and age where food prices have become more expensive, I don't know about you guys, but I am way more careful about what I buy and my kids are complaining because our refrigerator is always empty, but I'm like, if I don't have a plan for that food, then I, I'm not buying it. So, I think what, what you all are doing is, is building back that respect that we have for our food, for our environment, and, and creating a system where we can all not only help ourselves and our families, but our neighbors with that. So, thank you all for, for all, all you do. And then I'll just say to Mr. Dix back there, we are so excited, I am so excited about the Sustainability 2030 Plan and look forward to supporting that and just really from that high level, leading the initiative to help us as a county get to a better place for our environment and, and for our own health. So, thank you for, for leading the charge on that. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Denson. We'll be sure to make sure your district doesn't know you have favorite parts of your district.
I love them all, they're all different.
Love all your children the same.
We will just a minute.
In, in closing, my, many of my colleagues said it way better than I ever will. We are so grateful to the work you do at the systems level, the grassroots level, the neighborhood level, the policy level. This is really important work. One of the most, Councilmember Herrera said it, one of the most fun parts of this job is getting to learn about so many different things that we ordinarily wouldn't have the opportunity to learn about. It's definitely one of the more fun parts of this work. And being able to meet and see the community-based organizations and the volunteers that are just doing amazing work day in and day out, it's just, it's so heartwarming and so amazing. When I was at the Conservation District, I too did not have favorite programs, but one of my favorite programs was the Harvest Pierce County Program. I, I got to learn so much about the impact they were having, as previous speakers had said, about not, not just the, the systems that they create to amplify themselves and harness volunteer power to get out to farms and backyards. That is an amazing dispatch system in and of itself. But as you said, Councilmember Hinton, the, the workshops and the learning, the online, in the real world, community libraries, schools, the, the, the ability to amplify the, the learning and the doing because of the, the, the education that is done through the work to carry on that learning and develop that learning is, is really tremendous. So, such, such good work. Thank you for allowing us to highlight this. Hopefully those watching can join Councilmember Herrera's crew that he's going to be setting up. Many hands make easier work. We're going to join you if you invite us, Councilmember Herrera. We're going to, we're going to join you, we'll be on your crew. But there, there are other resources I know we'll, we'll highlight when we put this on the council's social media about how more people can get involved in these different programs, these different learning opportunities, and these different volunteer opportunities. So, we'll be sure to get that word out. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hinton?
Aye.
Councilmember Morell?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Krueger?
Nay.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is six ayes and one nay.
On a vote of six ayes and one nay, the resolution is adopted. Please join me in a round of applause. So, I think if it's okay, we would invite all of you, including Ingrid from the Public Health Department, to come up and we have some proclamations for you. We would love to capture the moment with a brief photo. Brian, do you think we should have folks down here or come up? There's stairs on either side.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Good to see you.
Somewhere around the field. I don't know. There's so many.
Layering.
Are we going to fit, Brian?
Go ahead and open them up and...
Open and turn them?
It's a better photo.
Yep.
The contract.
Turn them. Yep, here. Okay.
All right. One, two, three. We got one more. One, two, three. Perfect.
Thank you.
Dr. Chen is much more photogenic.
That's not true, you're fantastic.
This is, and Ryan?
Oh, that's my truck, that's not my truck.
Nice to meet you. How's your shirt this morning?
It's going good. I've enjoyed it a lot since I was here. It's been amazing work.
Awesome. I used to work there.
Devin, nice to meet you.
Good to see you Devin, and Ryan. Welcome again.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for making time to be here. Remind them. Well, I'm sorry. Good to see you.
To keep up with you.
Ingrid, hopefully we've given you plenty of time to get... Thanks for making time.
Remind them.
I'm sorry.
Good to see you.
Ingrid, hopefully we give you plenty of time to get to National Public Health Week at the City of Tacoma.
I'm in.
Good.
Yes, it's at 4:45 at show. So I'm, I'm good. I'm kind of appreciated.
Well, thank you for your patience.
We don't have any ordinances today. We do have a few resolutions. So that brings us to Section 9 Resolutions. We have Resolution 2023-24 in front of us. Councilmember Hitchens, for a motion?
Chair, I move adoption of R. 2023-24.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2023-24. Madam Clerk, will you please read?
Proposal number R. 2023-24, a resolution of the Pierce County Council authorizing the Pierce County Executive to execute an interlocal agreement between the Pierce County Flood Control Zone District and Pierce County accepting an economic stimulus grant for construction of Horse Haven Creek Culvert Replacement Project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bookie to introduce this item.
Thank you, Chair Mello, Paul Bookie, council staff. This resolution will authorize the county executive to execute an interlocal agreement with the Pierce County Flood Control Zone District. Flood Control Zone District awarded $650,000 for the Horse Haven Creek Culvert Replacement Project at 150th Avenue East, Bridge Number 31195C. Two 36-inch concrete culverts will be replaced with a larger box culvert. This project is included in the 2022-23 Capital Facilities Plan and the 2022-23 Surface Water Management Construction Fund Budget. It's project number D. 230. Funds are available for work completed in 2023. The county may submit to the Flood Control Zone District in writing no later than December 1st, 2023, a request to be granted an extension. The total cost of the project is estimated at $1 million. The local share is $350,000. Those funds will come from the Surface Water Management Fund. This was given a due pass recommendation at the March 27, 2023 Rules and Operations Committee meeting. And I believe Ms. Sarah Motzenbacher is on the line from our Surface Water Management Department to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bookie. Ms. Motzenbacher, do you, do you or department staff have anything to add?
I know you've covered it. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being with us. Do members have any questions before we open this up for a public hearing? Not seeing any. Is there anyone present wishing to provide comment on 2023-24? Not seeing anyone in chambers. Ms. Price, anyone online?
For any member of the public wishing to speak, you can press the raise hand icon in Zoom or press star nine on your telephone keypad. And first, we have caller ending in 075.
Hi, this is Rochelle Ginnis. Thanks for taking my call. I just want to say, this is the way we save the orcas. And I think this is a good thing that we're doing these culverts. I know they're expensive, but it's the way we do it. And we will win on this one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There are no other hands raised at this time.
No other hands. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Are there any final remarks by council members? Not seeing any. As it was indicated, we did have a presentation and discussion about this at the Rules and Operations Committee of the council. We were able to discuss it further and get our questions answered. So thank you to department staff for doing that, and thank you for advancing this work to get at our priority culvert replacement projects. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Morell?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is six ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes, on a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the motion is adopted. Item number two, proposal number R. 2023-28. Councilmember Hitchens, for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I move adoption of R. 2023-28.
Been properly moved and seconded to adopt proposal R. Clerk, will you please read?
Proposal number R. 2023-28, a resolution of the Pierce County Council authorizing the county executive to enter into a one-year contract for publishing legal notices for Pierce County.
Thank you. Ms. Long?
Thank you, and good afternoon. As stated in the title, this proposal would authorize the execution of a one-year contract between Pierce County and the News Tribune for publication of legal notices for the county. State law provides that at its first meeting in April, the council shall contract with a legal newspaper to serve as the official county newspaper for the term of one year commencing on July 1. That statute further provides that the contract shall be awarded to the best and lowest responsible bidder, giving consideration to the question of circulation and awarding the contract with a view to giving publication of notice the widest publicity. That said, the county code does allow for purchases where a special market condition exists to be directly negotiated, and this is in Section 2.106060. The News Tribune is the only qualified legal newspaper in the county which has sufficient circulation and will publish greater than once per week. So direct negotiations proceeded under the authority of our county code for services for the official newspaper. The Tribune publishes Monday through Friday and Sunday and guarantees a circulation of 48,000 daily and 99,000 on Sundays. The proposed contract is for a one-year period commencing July 1, and it is for a maximum of $135,000. And this does cover the publication of notice for, for all county departments. This was heard in the Rules and Operations Committee on March 20 and was forwarded to the full council with a due pass recommendation. And I will make a note that one question that did come up in committee was whether the libraries would provide copies of the paper at no additional cost. And thank you to Finance, who provided me that information, that that is a requirement of the contract. So the public libraries will have the newspapers for folks and deliver them there for free on a daily basis or the days that they publish. And I do note that Mr. Opitz is available for any questions from the Finance Department.
Thank you. Ms. Opitz, thank you for being with us on behalf of the Finance Department. Do you have anything to add?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council. For the record, I'm Wolf Opitz, Deputy Finance Director. I appreciate your favorable consideration of this item. We're making an annual visit with you, as statute requires, to designate a newspaper of record. A couple of other questions that arose in the Rules Committee discussion that might bear some clarification. The, this establishes a floor, if you will. It is not a restriction on your ability to use other methods and means by which to notify. It just requires that we create a newspaper of record. I would note that the statute that created this requirement was adopted in 1977. It's gone virtually unchanged. And in its three paragraphs of statute, it says newspaper in virtually every sentence. So I think it is probably ripe for some consideration by the legislature to update this into the 2020s at least. But that consideration would have to happen outside of Pierce County's ability to affect them. We might give voice through our county association and a couple of other folks to see if the legislature were to be willing to look into updating this. Thank you very much for your consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Questions or comments before we open this up for a public hearing? Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. And thank you, Mr. Opitz, for that update. Does that mean that if the state changes the RCW, we could possibly do two newspapers? Because in my district that is being dismissed now, if they could have it as well, because we don't even have delivery, they can't get folks who will deliver papers out there.
Delivery of paper is one way. I know that newspaper is used more broadly, in this case, to include online representation of those notifications. So I know that they're published in the manner that the News Tribune publishes. So there is that vehicle. And again, the county is not limited now to use other channels, as you may wish, if you want to make broader notification to include more people. And I know that we do.
If I may, I think, maybe I didn't ask correctly. So what I'm understanding is they could change it to where we could have a second newspaper that does deliver to an area if the law changed.
I think the statute could be changed to require that, I think, more likely in the interim, we can, we can use those additional channels as we see fit. Right now, we're not limited to only this newspaper.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell?
I think the question got answered there, that, that we, we voluntarily can put in as many papers as we want.
Absolutely.
We must put it in one. But we could
Right.
do it in 10 different newspapers across the county as we see fit, to the amount that we wish to fund as a council.
Exactly right. That's my understanding. As Ms. Opitz said, this is a floor, not a ceiling. And the administrative time of doing that and the cost of doing that is, is one, one consideration for, for it. Let's open this up for a public hearing on 2023-28. Anyone in chambers wishing to provide comment on this resolution? Not seeing anyone in chambers. Ms. Price, anyone online?
There are currently no hands raised.
Seeing no hands, we'll bring it back to council for any final remarks. Not seeing any, Mr. Opitz, thank you for answering our questions and helping keep us compliant and that we can communicate the public's business. This is, we use lots of different tools to communicate the public's business. This is one that we must do per state statute. We use social media, websites, electronic newsletters, Pierce County Television, community meetings. We do lots of things that are above and beyond statute to get the word out about what we're working on. So this helps us. But this is a, a must have to stay compliant with state law. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
Councilmember Morell?
Aye.
Councilmember Mello?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the motion, the resolution is adopted. Our final resolution this afternoon is proposal R. 2023-32. Councilmember Morell, for a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for approval, proposal number R. 2023-32.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2023-32. Madam Clerk, will you please read?
Proposal number R. 2023-32, a resolution of the Pierce County Council setting the date of an evening District 1 council meeting for Wednesday, May 3, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. at White River High School Library, 26928, 128th Street, Buckley, Washington. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Long?
Thank you. The Pierce County Charter provides that the council shall conduct at least one evening meeting in each of the seven council districts each year. And the council's rules of procedure in the county code provide that the specific time, place, and dates of these evening meetings be set by resolution. The resolution before you today would do just that for the District 1 meeting for this year. It will be set for 6:00 p.m. on Wednesday, May 3, at the White River High School Library in Buckley. And this will be in addition to the regular 3:00 p.m. meeting of that week. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments before we open this up for a public hearing? Councilmember Morell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, I am garnishing support for this resolution because obviously District 1 sets the bar for all in-district meetings, and we will not fail this time to add surprises and other things to the agenda. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Our appreciation's to Judy, Ms. Judy Hurley.
Exactly.
Vice Chair Campbell?
I'm sorry, there was a bit of an echo in here. Did you say the meeting was at a bar?
That's an interesting concept.
Thank you. Thank you, council member. Let's open this up for a public hearing. Anyone in chambers wishing to provide comment on this resolution? Not seeing any, anyone online?
There are currently no hands raised.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Any final remarks? Not seeing any. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember, Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
Councilmember Morell?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Mello?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the motion is adopted. I'm looking out, looking forward to get to White River High School. Thank you for going first, Councilmember Morell, to allow us to get out into the community and do our in-district meetings in community. Looking forward to that. Other items of business or announcements, do members have any? Councilmember Denson?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to let folks know that this Thursday, April 6, we are having another Gig Harbor, well, we're having a property tax exemption workshop for seniors and disabled people in Gig Harbor at City Hall from 1:00 to 3:00. And the last one we had out on the Key Peninsula was standing room only. We had to turn people away. It was really, really well received. And we've already got 50 RSVPs for this one and expecting a lot of drop-ins. So it's something that is of high interest to the community, and I'm excited that folks are coming out to learn how they can save some money on their property taxes, as well as avail themselves of some of the other county programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Denson. Thank you for hosting another one of those. So glad that folks are taking interest in that and learning. That's great. Thank you for hosting. I will just note that I brought the trophy in chambers. Yours truly. One are in office NCAA March Madness pool. No money was exchanged hands. It's all for glory and pride. Thank you, Councilmember Morell, for reminding us of that. Seriously, it was just all pride. But if folks want to come and touch it and take pictures with it, it'll, it'll be in my office for the next year. Come on, come on in. We can take pictures together. On, on a, on a more somber and serious note, I wanted to make mention of someone that several of us have come to know and love in, in the Pierce County community. Those of you who know Chandler O'Leary, Chandler O'Leary is a very internationally-known artist in Pierce County, Tacoma specifically. I know Councilmember Campbell has come to know Chandler very personally as well. Primarily a letterpress artist, but has evolved her art form to writing books and other forms of visual arts. She really made her international calling in letterpress art. Just an amazing artist who not only told amazing stories, especially of women, I wish we would have thought of highlighting her work during Women's History Month. She has a really powerful series called The Dead Feminist Society, where she highlighted local and international women. Just an amazing artist who not only, amazing by her own art form, but she really worked to cultivate the South Sound world of artists and helped empower other artists to start their own businesses and, and find their calling. She very unexpectedly passed away this last weekend, and really leaving a big hole in the heart of many who knew her and loved her, her art form and the stories that she was able to tell. So our heart does go out to the many folks who knew and loved Chandler O'Leary's art and, and the people who she inspired to start new businesses and, and live their life in inspiring ways. Thank you. Ms. Long, any other business for council today? That brings us to Citizens Forum. Is there anyone here wishing to participate in Citizens Forum? We invite you to the podium. You have three minutes to make your remarks. Not seeing anyone in chambers. Ms. Price, anyone online?
For any member of the public wishing to speak, you can press the raise hand icon in Zoom or press star nine on your telephone keypad. Please state your name if you'd like it on the record. First, we have Yolanda.
Good afternoon, council members. Yolanda Markle, Frederiksen, Savannah area. And I wanted to comment, because we don't talk back to our comments here. So I would like to comment on the Canyon project that's from bumping out from 208, from 200th to 208. And when it comes past mine, I'm the third house from 208. So it really impacts me. I talked to the contractor on And I wanted to comment, because we don't talk back to our comments here. So I would like to comment on the Canyon project that from bumping out from 208, from 200th to 208th. And when it comes past mine, I'm the third house from 208th. So it really impacts me. I talked to the contractor on site and see, we had to move a lot of shrubs, you know, move back things because, you know, we, we didn't think that this was going to come too soon. But we, we know where the county line was. But we, I got a letter, oh geez, early January, occupant. We've, my husband's, we've been living here for over 50 years. Occupant, either you take your stuff out or we're going to take it. Well, okay, that was supposed to happen on the 31st, well, of, of January, it didn't happen. Well, I'm watching the clock, so I got to make sure I get everything in because I just wanted to know who I was going to thank from the council for being so special that I wrote a letter to all of you and within less than 24 hours, a big machine came and pulled up my two pear tree, excuse me, plum trees and all my junipers beautifully, without messing up all the rocks or anything. Who was that special person that got my trees ripped out before anybody else's? And I'm the third house from Canyon. So they can put in my sidewalk to nowhere. So I can have semis running down my neighborhood now. Our children aren't going to be able to do this because why? Because the council sold 38th Street to private prop, to private owners. So now traffic is coming in my neighborhood down 208th, a simple country road. And the lady at, when I called at the county, said, "We can't do anything about the road until it's destroyed. Then we'll fix it." So thank you, but no thank you? And who's going to take credit for having those trees pulled out? Was it my representative? You haven't done anything else for me lately, so I'm assuming that's probably from you and your friend, the czar. Oh, I'm sorry, the county executive. Listen, people, this is what happens. He wants to change everything. We don't even have a plan to bump out to 224th. So just, no thank you. Yes, you've destroyed my neighborhood. Watch out, people. He's coming. He's clear-cutting everything and he wants to run for governor. God help us.
Thank you, Ms. Markle.
There are no other hands raised at this time.
Seeing no other hands, we'll close the Citizens Forum portion of our meeting. I'm certain the council member has heard the feedback about the Canyon Road Extension Project. And I know that council member will communicate with the department as appropriate and constituents as appropriate to mitigate impacts to adjacent businesses and homeowners. So if there's anything we, we need to do, you'll, you'll let us know. Seeing no other business in front of council, we stand adjourned.